Okay, I'd like to call the, sorry, can I get some feedback? I'd like to call the August 12th, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the Live Meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudene, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yes. Chair Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Ham?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner Hickey?
Present.
And absent is Commissioner Tegney.
And we are joined today by Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkhorn and Community Development Deputy Director Jennifer Dart. Next on our agenda, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
No one online?
Okay. So, moving on, we have one item on consent, which is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from our regular meeting on July 22nd, 2025. Would any commissioner like to pull the item, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we have no public hearings tonight, so we will move on to business items. Our first item is to adopt a resolution PC 2505, finding the donation of a public access easement over a portion in conformance with the general plan sequoia negative declaration adopted December 9th, 2022. Can we begin with a brief staff report?
Sure, well, hello, good evening commissioners. I'm really excited to be in front of you about the Arcata Annie and Mary project because even though it's been, this project has been a priority of the city and of the city council for at least eight years, I don't think we've, staff have been in front of your planning commission about the project. So I just wanted to give an overview briefly and then really show how the nexus with the planning commission's work is really needed for continuing a portion of that project. So the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail has been a priority of the city to really connect the northern Arcata neighborhoods and places of business with the non-motorized trail for walking, biking connectivity. And that's really been, especially since the city completed the Bay Trail North. So the Annie and Mary Trail is currently out for construction bid. So we have completed all of the planning, design, right-of-way acquisition. We have received our construction funding allocation. And we anticipate that construction may get started this fall. The scope of the project is about three and a half miles from the skate park where the current Bay Trail is, has its northern terminus, following the rail corridor, which is a rail-to-trail scenario. We have right-of-way from the, or with the Great Redwood Trail Agency, who is a key partner, and all the way up through city limits and through the Alder Grove Industrial Park, also including some much-needed complete streets improvements over the Giantoli Lane overpass over 299, to really connect Valley West to this trail corridor. And then from our planning efforts in 2018 and 2019, we really heard from the community that they wanted a family-friendly destination in the northern part of the Annie and Mary. And so the city has partnered with the county, the Humboldt County, or sorry Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and GRTA to extend the Class 1 trail outside of city limits, all the way to the Mad River at the Water District's Park 1 pump station. So this is about three and a half miles paved, paved trail. So that's the overall scope of the project. As I said, the Water District has been a key partner in the planning and the design. And we secured right-of-way, from them through the right-of-way process, their water board, Water District Board also approved donating and easement to the city at their June board meeting. And so that is what the main subject of our conversation today. So just wanted to detail a little bit more about that. So as I said, the trail project will be located on the trail, on the former rail corridor. Additionally, the Water District secured right-of-way for a new electrical building on the trail corridor where we were planning to put our trail. So we had to work with them to route the trail around an existing electrical building. So this is just more of a photo to show you why we're looking at this easement. The, we have right-of-way secured from the Great Redwood Trail Agency, you know, all the way up till here. And then we worked with the Water District to route around this existing electrical building. This is a snapshot from our 100% designs, detailing how the trail will go out and around, be along a boardwalk to skirt around the electrical building and then get back on the rail corridor. So the, the purpose of the easement is really to secure in perpetuity the right-of-way for the trail that really documents that the city would be responsible for operations and maintenance. The Water District Board has agreed to donate that easement to the city because they see the, the benefits of having a trail connection to Park 1 and to the Mad River and having these additional recreational amenities. Part of the city's process in considering an easement is ensuring that the easement would be in conformance with the general plan. And so at the staff level, we believe this easement would meet conformance with the general plan, a key item of which in the Parks and Recreation element, there is a policy specifically focused on priorities for enhanced non-motorized connectivity. And the Annie and Mary Trail is one of those listed in the policy. I think just promoting additional places for people to be active, to connect with other community members really goes hand-in-hand with the health element in the general plan as well. So that is just the overview of the project and just touching on how staff feels this would be in conformance with the general plan. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
What's the timeline for completion?
Great, I guess I didn't touch on that, thank you. So we are hoping to begin construction in the fall and really, we're hoping to really focus on from the skate park north to Cal Poly's new student housing. As that, this trail will provide a key connectivity for students that will be living there. Our overall timeframe for the project is the bulk of the construction will occur in 2026 with the anticipated construction kind of end date in, you know, before December of 2026.
Anyone else have any clarifying questions? Okay, oh, go ahead, Peter.
I have a futuristic question. Are there any plans to extend this to Blue Lake?
Yeah, so the Friends of the Annie and Mary Trail has been working really since the mid-'90s when the last trains ran on the Arcata and Mad River rail corridor to really help accelerate the development of this trail between Arcata and Blue Lake. City of Blue Lake completed their, the first portion, the one mile through their city limits. The next project will be the city going to construction, hopefully and, you know, having the trail open by the end of 2026. Caltrans District 1 has been partnering with the Blue Lake Rancheria, Great Redwood Trail Agency, and the county to develop a segment between Blue Lake and Glendale where the Glendale Murphys is located. So the Caltrans is leading, is kind of the lead agency for that segment. I think the hardest part will definitely be between the city's project at the Pump Station 1 and getting further east and over the Mad River to connect to the, the hopeful trail segment at Glendale. So that does not have a timeline at this point. But I certainly see with the completion of the Humboldt Bay Trail, that may, or at least between Eureka and Arcata, that may be a next priority.
Yeah, I think we all do. All right, so with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. And please feel free to state your name for the record. Do we have any public comments on this item?
And there are none on Zoom.
Okay. Anyone have anything else they'd like to say about this resolution?
I just think this is fantastic and I'm so happy we got to this point. I think this is a great project and I'm very enthusiastic about it.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution PC 2505, finding the donation of a public access easement over a portion of APN's 504-20110 and 504-20111 in conformance with the general plan.
I'll second that motion.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Peter, do you have something before we vote?
I do. We should amend it because Scott is no longer our chair.
I would approve that amendment, or I would agree with that amendment. But aside from that, my motion stands.
Good catch. All right, so, go ahead.
Is everyone in favor of this?
Yeah, I think, motion and a second, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, and thank you Emily. The next item on our agenda is Resolution PC 2506, recommending a community benefits program to the city council. Action not subject to additional sequel review. We're coming back to this item after having considered the community benefits at our April 8th meeting. Can we please begin with a staff report?
Sure, absolutely. So I didn't prepare anything formal with this since you've already kind of gone over these several times. I can give some background if you're interested in that, if anybody needs kind of a follow-up background about exactly what the community benefits program is. But I know the way that you left it off at that point was that there were some additional comments that didn't get discussed. I believe Commissioner Lehman had some comments and then there may have been some other things that, that you wanted to discuss. And then there were a couple of things that I noticed that were left off. So I'd like to go over those and just make sure that we solidify those if we're ready to send this to council.
That sounds good to me. Peter, do you want to start with your, or, we can also go back.
I have, I have the list up here too, if you wanted to take a look at those.
I have a question. Some of these are labeled embedded and forgive me if I don't remember, but why are some embedded and the others are not? What's the difference?
That might be one of these hidden fields. I think there were a couple, I know there was one that was related to grant funding that we had to maintain, which was a SULC commitment based on that grant funding, but I don't know if that's...
Yeah, there's a hidden field for value. And...
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, embedded in the project specifically, so like this would be co-developed with the Wiat tribe. That would be embedded, so there, there's not necessarily a value for that, is what that means. Makes more sense now that I've opened it up.
And I'm realizing that before we dive too far into conversation, maybe we should open it up for public comment and then we can have, oh, go ahead.
Do you, the only other thing I wanted to mention, there is a, there is this report that, the engagement report. I kind of wanted to highlight this, this is something that Commissioner Simmons brought up, just to kind of bring us back to the engagement that we did around this effort and what the community was really valuing when looking at these. And so I just thought it'd be good for us because I know a lot of, a lot of the commission wasn't here during that process. We're not, you know, we're not on the planning commission at that time. So these are the things that really resonated with the community when we worked on this, when we did some of the workshopping. And this is from the community engagement report from that time, so I just thought this might be a good thing. So I agree, I think this was a good thing to kind of bring back up so you could see which ones were the highest. And housing creation obviously was, was a large category that was important to the community.
Thank you for that. Any other sort of high-level clarifying questions before we take public comment and then we can dive in? Okay. Yeah, please line up at the lectern for public comment and if you're online, raise your hand or press *9.
For the City of Arcata, we've been really engaged as a partner in the whole process of develop, of working with the Gateway, having community meetings, working a lot, developing the Creamery District starting in 2013. And so I just wanted to bring to the, the Planning Commission's attention that there's actually not a community benefit for the arts. And we had talked about a community benefit for the arts being perhaps a fund that would be started for, with, as a community benefit that would then support the arts and arts activities in the City of Arcata. And so that's kind of a glaring thing that is missing for me, whereas the, the work that we've done as the local arts agency in the Creamery District was all over the Gateway Plan, our photos, our pony, all the work that we've done sort of creating that, that cultural district. And so to me, it seems like a bit of a hole, a gaping hole for the arts. And, and if we look at some of the things that are there for like economic development and what the arts do for economic development, beautification, retention of workers, you know, just all mental health, all the things that the arts do within the City of Arcata. So I'm urging the Planning Commission to put that back into the, as a community benefit, to have something that dedicates some sort of something to the arts. I'm pushing for a fund that would be managed through sort of committees that we have managing the Art Around Arcata place right now. So I don't know how that works within the city or to be managed through Playhouse Arts or however it would work best, but to really have a fund for artists, so not only are they looking at artist housing, but they're actually looking at support for them as an artist, as economic development, tourism, you know, all of those things that the arts bring to Arcata that are written into the Strategic Arts Plan. And in fact, were really discussed heavily when looking at the Gateway Project and how we mobilized a lot of people to come in and comment and, and be engaged in the Creamery District and the Gateway Project. And so I'd just like to put that back in there and say, hmm, how do we, how do we make that? You know, as, as you see native arts and cultural space, arts and culture, and it's not in this plan that's going towards city council. So I have 24 seconds to say, put it back in the plan! That's my pitch and of course I'll answer any questions or anything that you have of me.
Does anyone else want to give public comment in person? Anyone online?
No.
Okay, so I have a clarifying question, which is I thought there was a, a fund, yeah. 0.5% of the construction cost towards installed public arts paid-in-lu fund. I, sorry, for, for staff, just a...
I thought there was two, so I'm looking through here to see if I can find it.
It's, what is that, 18?
Oh, there we go.
So does that, I mean, hopefully that addresses your concern. And if it doesn't, you can always email us, public comment as well, to follow up on this. No, usually it, it's... No, but we do appreciate your comment. And I, I will say written comments can really help because we can really dive into the issue and respond. It just...
So this is not, it doesn't necessarily answer this, but I, I also want to put in that after our last discussion, Commissioner Hickey and I kind of came up with a proposal to combine several of these that would include kind of, the proposal was like to commit a minimum of 1,500 square feet or 1.5% of the project cost to the following. And it combines numbers 6, 10, and 15 and potentially others. But the list could be potentially children's daycare, senior service center, publicly available native arts and cultural spaces designed in partnership with local tribes or nonprofit organizations, or onsite public open space. So I think that that plus an in-lu fee could potentially cover the arts questions. But yeah, so I, I think that there was some discussion around this, but I appreciate your comment for sure.
Okay, so I, I would love to hear more about this proposal. So you'd be combining multiple and then it'd have like a higher point total, or?
Yeah, yeah, so I think that out of our discussion last time, which was back in April, so forgive me that this is very far back in the memory space. We, you know, there were several of these that like committed square footage or something that seemed like very specific. And I think that we felt that potentially having a more generalized proposal that could like reduce the number of these and then be committed to like these options, for example. Just kind of like, because some of these are very specific, but like they could be combined into one. Commissioner Hickey, I don't know if you have any follow-up question or comments on that?
I had to go back to the email record of our correspondence, Commissioner Ham, and you had it cited perfectly that it was items 6, 10, and 15. And so a, a part of this is, I think, just streamlining it for digestibility and understand, I think providing a sense of flexibility to the, to the developer, to the interests. Just feeling that it's maybe still a little bit, you know, we're talking about implementation today and it still feels very cumbersome to implement, I have to say, and, and that we're, it's a little bit of a fruit salad in the sense of some things are going into a fund, which is, I think I pointed out last time, more traditionally the way that community benefits work, whereas others are becoming design mandates to be delivered by the developer onsite. My preference is actually always for the former because I think that it's more flexible and adaptable over time and this is in some ways a grand experiment. So I think that it, it's a simple, it's, it's more of just a streamlining administratively at this point to combine those items, but maybe setting a precedent for just creating a more usable tool.
So, so if I'm understanding, so 6, 10, 15, it's bus passes, electric vehicle charging, and...
I believe those reference numbers do not reflect, like are not reflected in this spreadsheet that we're looking at here. I think it was like the children's daycare, senior service center, the native arts and cultural spaces, and the onsite public open space. I, I would have to find them here, but the spreadsheet that I was given, I guess that we all received on April 8th, would be that one. So I, yeah, there seems to have been changes to those numbers, but it, it's those specific ones because I think that we had some longer discussions around the nuance of each of those, the children's daycare, the senior service center, the native arts and cultural space. And I think rather than getting into the nitty-gritty of each and every one of those, that it could be a more general and applicable to multiple projects benefit.
So, so instead of listing them each separately, it would be a broad category that said?
Yes.
Well, what would it say?
We proposed commit a minimum of 1,500 square feet or 1.5% of the project cost to one of the following. And then it lists a children's daycare, senior service center, publicly available native arts and cultural space designed in partnership. I think it just copies those and then the onsite public open space.
So it doesn't actually change the...
And I think that we felt that potentially having a more generalized proposal that could like reduce the number of these and then be committed to like these options, for example. Just kind of like, because some of these are very specific, but like they could be combined into one. Commissioner Hickey, I don't know if you have any follow-up question or comments on that.
I had to go back to the email record of our correspondence, Commissioner Hamm, and you had it cited perfectly that it was items six, 10, and 15. And so a part of this is, I think, just streamlining it for digestibility and understand, I think, providing a sense of flexibility to the to the developer, to the interests. Just feeling that it's maybe still a little bit, you know, we're talking about implementation today, and it still feels very cumbersome to implement, I have to say, and and that we're. It's a little bit of a fruit salad in the sense of some things are going into a fund, which is, I think I pointed out last time, more traditionally the way that community benefits work, whereas others are becoming design mandates to be delivered by the developer onsite. My preference is actually always for the former because I think that it's more flexible and adaptable over time, and this is in some ways a grand experiment. So I think that it's a simple, it's it's more of just a streamlining administratively at this point to combine those items that may be setting a precedent for just creating a more usable tool.
So so if I'm understanding, so six, 10, 15, it's bus passes, electric vehicle charging, and?
I believe those reference numbers do not reflect, like are not reflected in this spreadsheet that we're looking at here. I think it was like the children's daycare, senior service center, the native arts and cultural spaces, and the onsite public open space. I I would have to find them here, but the spreadsheet that I was given, I guess that we all received on April 8th would be that one. So yeah, there seems to have been changes to those numbers, but it it's those specific ones. Because I think that we had some longer discussions around the nuance of each of those, the children's daycare, the senior service center, the native arts and cultural space. And I think rather than getting into the nitty-gritty of each and every one of those, that it could be a more general and applicable to multiple projects benefit.
So so instead of listing them each separately, it would be a broad category that said?
Yes.
Well, what would it say?
We proposed commit a minimum of 1,500 square feet or 1.5% of the project cost to one of the following. And then it lists a children's daycare, senior service center, publicly available native arts and cultural space designed in partnership. I think it just copies those and then the onsite public open space.
So it doesn't actually change the substantive what you could do, it's more that it just organizes the list a bit?
Yes, and I think in the vote when we were going through, like Commissioner Hickey and I were having maybe a sidebar about some of them, and maybe some were voted to be removed, but we we wanted them to be part of this. We weren't suggesting that they were to be removed from community benefits at all. I think we just wanted to streamline this process and the formatting of it all.
Confirm, and now I, going through it, I'm struggling to find the original criteria. It seemed like they all got removed. But we were in favor, I believe, at that time of maintaining a benefit for some form of flex space that delivers a community benefit like a daycare center or a senior center. And then I remember we used the same logic, I think, on some of the incentives around bike transportation, where we said, you know, this might not necessarily be best delivered as an onsite service. Rather, let's consolidate these different green transport criteria into a fund. And I I thought we had implemented that as well, but.
I'm not seeing it in our correspondence, but yes.
So the number nine on this spreadsheet does have the children's daycare or senior service center. Was there an additional one? Did those did those get combined at the April meeting? I wasn't at the April meeting, so I apologize that maybe this happened already, or part of this discussion already took place?
I believe, so I had emailed this to David, and so again, this was so long ago, I'm not sure. This, I think that kind of got lost in time, but I believe those were together. I could be totally wrong, but then there was the, on the kind of remove list, I believe the native arts and cultural space is in there. Yeah, 23. It would be kind of simplifying that and adding it to there, and then the onsite public open space.
So two, nine, and 23, it sounds like, rows two, nine, and 23 being combined.
Yeah. Would be our proposal.
I'm a little, you know, this arbitrary amount of 1.5% of the cost is definitely arbitrary. And nobody seems to know where it came from. Why not have a percentage of the lot area or a percentage of the square footage of the area that's being built be committed to these various different alternative uses, rather than a percentage of the cost, a percentage of the area?
Well, if it's a if it's a fund, we need to convert it into dollars somehow, so.
This, yeah, I'm not seeing this as a fund.
Sorry, which one are you looking at?
Number two is the one I'm looking at right off the bat. But it could apply to a senior center or a childcare center. Number two is for public open space. And it seems like it's an area, it should be a fraction of the area. I don't know how much.
Yeah, I think we were taking some of the precedent of the existing square footage like reference. Like essentially, I think this proposal is to combine the spatial projects that were referenced in this whole large list. And so we were just using what was based on this list. So somewhere, somebody came up with minimum of 1,500 square feet for children's daycare or senior service center. I think that these spaces need, like, there is a minimum for that. I couldn't tell you what that is, but you couldn't necessarily operate a 200-square-foot daycare. So I think, you know, based on what was being referenced here, the 1,500, the 1.5%, but those, you know, I think could be altered.
I like the idea of, I think there's some flexibility here with either contributing to a fund or contributing square footage, because there may be projects where it's less desirable or appropriate to donate space. And so it gives the flexibility to donate money to a fund. And I think in the world in which the fund grows, then I think it has an opportunity for a bigger or a broader range of community art, for example, kinds of projects. So I like that component of this, and I like the flexibility about how it's applied.
I'll also just note that in a separate item, it says a minimum of 1,500 square feet of ground for street-facing space for residents serving commercial uses as identified in the code. So it sounds like there may be a section of the code that requires a minimum of 1,500 square feet, and that that was an arbitrary.
I think that's likely accurate, but I would have to look at it.
Okay, so if I'm understanding it correctly, we we have a proposal to sort of combine several of these items, and that you've already communicated that proposal to Community Development Director Loya. And so I'm I'm wondering, from staff's perspective, how best to proceed with that sort of situation?
I think when you're ready to forward this on, I would say also mention that we would be combining items, if they stay the same, make sure they stay the same, two, nine, and 23 into one. And you've already addressed how to do that, so I think that we would be able to do that without any issues. I think that would be fine. Is is everyone in support of that?
I'd like to see it before I support it, but yes.
I could try and type it up right now, it may take a minute, but I could do my best.
We're keeping, if I'm understanding it correctly, we're keeping the substance exactly the same. It's more for like the readability of this document when you're a developer, right? Because instead of having to search through 20 of these, there will be fewer of them that list like, donate 1.5% of your project to X, Y, A, B, C, D, right? And then it's just easier to read that way. And I think Ashton and, you know, Amanda have both dealt with documents like this before, and so have sympathy for the developer who has to read through all this. And I I agree that cleaning it up is a good idea. Does that sound good, Peter?
I'd still like to see the wording before I vote on it.
Can we can we get like a sample? Is that is that possible? Just type one up quick and?
Yeah, Ashton, you want to?
Can I forward you this email? Or do you want me to say it out loud, or do you want me to show you my screen? I don't know.
Read it out loud.
Read it out loud.
That'd be great.
Okay, commit a minimum of 1,500 square feet or 1.5% of the project cost to one of the following.
Nine, sections nine, two, or 23?
Yeah. And they're copied, you know, as far as I can tell, the same.
So really no substantive change, it's just more of a housekeeping approach?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it is really just, looking at that list, there were many spatial implications that had specifics around them that seemed, you know, that they just could have been more clear, should they be combined into one. And again, I think it is more general as you're applying this to a breadth of projects, to have one line item of this community benefit that could apply to several projects moving forward.
I still kind of feel that a percentage of the this the built square footage is a better way to allocate this. Maybe, I I don't know, 5%, 3% of the of the project square square or area be be used for these purposes, rather than 1 and 1/2% of the cost. I don't know, it seems like it ought to go area to area rather than cost, but I'm open to suggestions on that.
I guess it depends on the topic. I think I think for some, like, we just heard for arts, there was a request for it to be fund-based. And then I think for others, like a daycare facility, you really want a minimum square footage, and not necessarily a percentage of square footage, because, you know, you don't know what the what the size of the building is going to be. And so having a minimum makes more sense than having a. I guess, oh, go ahead.
I I was kind of curious, because I know there was some administrative concerns with using the fund approach versus the onsite. And I noticed that the transportation fund is still in here, and I actually am unclear whether that fund already exists. Does the city have a transportation fund, or if there's, you know, financial mechanisms that have to be set up in order to implement this program anyway? Then it seems like talking through what is funded and what is going to be for onsite is still fair game for this commission, right?
There would have to be funds set up.
Created.
Yeah, this is a very new program, so those would not already necessarily be set up.
I would personally be supportive of Commissioner Hamm's and Commissioner Hickey's amendment to this. And also, I mean, I think that it says commit a minimum of 1,500 square feet, so maybe you have more. But we're not willing to accept less, and in that case, you have another option and many other benefits to choose from. So I would recommend that we approve this.
I agree with Abby.
Okay, I think, okay, great. Does anyone have any other changes to propose to this list?
Yeah. I was looking at number six, maybe. Was that included? No. So the the bus passes for a minimum of 20 years. I'll just point out, 20 years is a really long time, and most developers wouldn't want to commit to anything that they're responsible for for 20 years. So it would probably, I mean, the way this is written, I think, would mean that almost all developers wouldn't choose it. And I'm not quite sure how to fix it, but I'll just make that comment.
Go ahead, Ashton.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting point. However, I think in the development of affordable housing, you're committing to de restricting the unit cost for 55 years. And so if you're building that, you know, there is a benefit already set in there for 55 years. And so I I think a 20-year timeframe for bus passes could be reasonable.
I'll also say that that year, I believe, was borrowed from a project in the Eureka that had 20-year bus passes, and that and that was an affordable housing project, but, you know, it it was a project that got built in Eureka that had bus passes for all the residents for 20 years, so.
And maybe in 20 years, we'll just have free public transport, so.
Maybe.
I'm also in favor of leaving the 20 years.
Last time I rode the bus, it was free, but I think they were just having technical difficulties that day, but.
We regularly have months where the bus is free here in Humboldt, which is is lovely. Okay, moving along, Peter, do you have another one?
Yeah, I have one more. And that is number 20. It's restoring creeks and wetlands. And half a percent is not much. And I think that's unlikely to cover the cost. I mean, why not have it 1 and 1/2% like the others? I, for me, restoring creeks and wetlands is a big benefit.
Yeah, I actually had a question about, this one is missing a point, and I, it's, when you have a dollar amount and then you have points, I feel like a developer is going to look at the two and say, oh, I can do this one for either more or less, for more or less points. And so there's, unless we value one of these as twice or three times as much as another one, there's a part of me that wants to keep all of the 1.5% as the same points, so that it's it's not like I'm just looking at what is the cheapest one. And I know we're not supposed to think about values, but I, once you put it in 1.5% of project cost, it's hard not to think of it in terms of values. I don't know if people, how people feel about that.
There are a limited number of parcels that actually have creeks and/or wetlands on them within the city limit, so I would be in favor of increasing this to 1.5%.
Do other folks want to, I, we can increase it, which which increases the value. I also think it potentially makes it less likely to actually get selected by the developer. So there is a, there's a push and pull there. Because we could, we could do this as 0.5% and then give it three points, and then a developer is going to be like, wow, this is a cheap and easy way to get my points, and we'll develop a lot of creeks that way, but we might lose some other things. And so the the trick with this is how do you balance it all? Yeah.
I feel myself about to say something unconstructive, but I just, a little more history on this. The decision to do it this way versus using the original public opinion as a weighting system, attaching the points to the increments of 1.5, it all goes into the slush fund. And then the weights go, how many dollars get allotted to each use, right? So your developer wants to get two points, so they're going to put 3% of public cost into the fund. The fund has all these different things ranked, let's say arts was third, so they get that percentage of the money that year. Does that kind of make sense? So the way that things are prioritized by our community or being drawn from the fund, it gives an eloquent way of also updating that year on year, where you can have a citizens' council that decides what their priorities are as they change and evolve, instead of doing it 1.5 for this and 1.5 for that. And if your parcel happens to abut a creek, then you can go for that one, and if it doesn't. I know, to me, it just kind of makes more sense to prioritize out of the fund instead of have the developer do it on the rubric level, if I'm making any sense at all.
So so I have a question, which is, the staff and we're talked about how this had to follow, you know, the existing law around exactions and proportionality, and and so if it's just a slush fund that we can then spend on whatever we want, I worry that it would run afoul of of that. And I'm I'm curious if staff has an opinion on that.
I think that that was part of the concern. And I also think that some of the discussion that we had around this was not just wanting a fund that then could be used for multiple different things, it was wanting there to be some flexibility and some actual desires from the community that are not necessarily related to just funding. So I think that that's how this came about, and I know it is a little bit more complex. The other thing I wanted to point out, which I think is really important for you guys to understand, is the way that we're doing this as a resolution allows us to put it out there and see if it works. And if it's not working, or if there's things that come up that need to be added, or we need to completely revamp this entire system, we have the ability to do that. So that's the reason that we did it this way, is just so that we have that flexibility. And there will be things that come up, and there will be different community priorities and changes, and we already know that. And this may, this system may not, you know, it may not be the best way to do it, but we can actually come back and and revisit it as needed, the way that we're doing it this way.
Yeah, it's something we've talked about in these discussions that we've had so many times over so many meetings with so much community input, that at the end, there there just comes a point where we go, sure, let's try this. And then we can turn the dials a little bit once we have some actual data. But otherwise, we're kind of trying to decide in a vacuum. And so for that, I'm hesitant to keep tinkering and adjusting, because I don't, I'm not convinced that it's productive.
Go ahead, Peter.
I just want to make one more point about the the fund. And that is, having lived in a bureaucracy for a long time, if if the money is spent by the developer directly on the project, then each dollar is spent doing a dollar's worth of work. If it goes into a fund, there are administrative costs, and each dollar is worth 80 cents or 60 cents rather than a dollar. So there is an advantage to doing it directly through the project.
Then commit, right, and take out all the, you know, I think the blended approach, we're ending up with something, I don't know, I think you're going to struggle. I was ready to approve it where we were at on April 8th, and we're seeing it again, and I'm not sure, give me a value, but but maybe that's the question, and we'll see who takes which which kinds. you need value, but, but maybe that's the question, and we'll see who takes which, which kinds of incentives and.
I, I think there, there is a need for seeing what happens with this. I guess my, my point, and this was getting to what Peter was saying, I do think that the 0.5s should probably be increased to 1.5, and that the point value for all of the fund terms should be equal, right? That it should be two points for all of them, and that you shouldn't get three points for one sum of money towards one thing and two points for the same amount of money for another thing. Those are sort of two broad, general changes that I, I feel like this list could use. And then at least the dollar in a fund always is the same amount, getting you the same amount of points, no matter which of these criteria it is. And that'll just sort of level it out across the. Does that sound good to everyone?
That sounds great to me. I think we should increase this to 1.5, and then I would personally be interested in making a motion to approve this and send this to the city council.
Before you do that, could you if I heard it correctly, I believe we're changing these to 1.5, and the point value for those is going to be two? Is that accurate? Does everybody agree with that? Because I do need to put a point value on this one, so I'd like to clarify that. Mike, yeah?
Anywhere where it's currently 0.5, so there's two, I think, we can make 1.5, and then the point value for all of these, and I think most of them are two, but I think if we make these two as well, because the way we had it, it was, it was three points for 0.5, and then two points for 1.5, and I just can't imagine anyone ever choosing to pay six times as much for something, right? Like, I, I just, yeah. So just leveling all that out, I think. And then the developer can say, I like art, or I like parks, or whatever.
Yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense, and I really appreciate the reminder of, let's just see it in action and then continue to, to change this, because I think so much of planning and, and all of this is, you know, it happens in these rooms, and then we actually don't understand how implementation is going to go. So I, I appreciate that reminder, and also the kind of encouragement to tweak it in the future when we see that it's not working or working.
One other thing that I wanted to just bring up, because it kind of came up in staff discussion, was this specific date here, so that's why it's in red. Rapid housing production, application submitted prior to, and we, this date, July 1st, 2027, was in there when we were talking about this in April. Did we want to leave that date? Does that still seem like enough time? I know it is a three-point. And it is just application submitted prior to, but I wanted the commission to weigh in on whether or not this was still an appropriate date, or if you wanted to extend this a bit, whatever you'd like to do. I just wanted to ask that question.
I'd be interested in extending it.
I'm just curious, sorry, can you reiterate for us? Let's say we approve, and this goes to the city council, then what is a feasible, like, launch date for this to go live? Like, what would the start date be?
I think we would probably be bringing it sometime in September to city council, assuming that they didn't want to make additional changes and that they went with your recommendation and just moved it forward. We could start it fairly quickly. So I would say, you know, let's say by New Year at the latest. Would be my idea.
Nice even year.
I, I wonder if we could give this four points to do, because I, I think that 2027 aligns with the RENA year, and so it's like, okay, you get like six points if you apply before 2027, and then maybe we have a second date that you get fewer points. I don't know.
I believe our RENA has to be in by December of 2027, so you could extend that out to December of 2027 to kind of more align with that. And I don't think you'd want to do four points just because of the point structure. I guess it would work. I guess it would work. I was just curious how that would fit with this. That would give five, six, or seven stories the ability to use that.
I would think that December 31st, 2027 would be an appropriate date.
And the application, is the application to the planning commission?
Yes, it would actually, if they're using this, it would be ministerial, so it would be the building permit.
All in favor of extending this to December 31st, 2027?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. And I, I think we'll keep it at three points. I, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but I, I think you get a four-story building, and then maybe you throw in something else, and then you get five. Great. Can you actually go back to the, the point structure side? I just had one other thought about this. So we have, we have points, we have minimum number of benefits, and then we have a categories minimum, and I'm curious if there's any appetite for maybe increasing the categories minimum for some of them. I just, once you get up to the sort of six-point category, maybe we'd rather have a mix of things rather than sort of two big things. I, I, we don't have to do this. It's just sort of something that occurred to me.
I think my comment here would, would go back to, let's just see this in action, and then if, you know, if we think that developers aren't applying enough categories, then we could increase it, but I, I think I don't, again, like, the state density bonus is so tempting and alluring, like, I, I, I don't know why people would be using these, and so if they do, like, I don't want to make this even more unappetizing than it kind of will be.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, withdrawn. Okay, we had a proposal from Vice Chair Strickland. Does anyone have anything else? You know, speak now.
I'm ready to second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor of adopting this resolution with the changes we've, we've discussed.
Do I need to make a formal motion? Because I did not do that. Like a formal motion to adopt resolution PC 2506 recommending a community benefits program to the city council with the recommended changes.
And I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our business items, and we will now move on to correspondence and communications. Staff, do we have any correspondence for planning commission members?
I do not.
And is there any correspondence from the commission? Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.